I want to mention to participants and viewers that City Hall is temporarily closed to the public for in-person attendance at standing committees and council meetings. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city's website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for council, standing, or advisory committee meetings and information on request. And to make a request of any city service, please contact accessibility@london.ca or five five one six, pardon me, five one nine six six one two four eight nine extension two four two five. So colleagues, it is a pleasure to have you all back and as we, as we work towards a brand new year and a year of hope. And sometimes when all we've got left, a little bit of hope isn't a bad thing. And I'm very delighted that we're all here together as we celebrate our work going forward. And I'd like to thank the citizens of London for their ongoing participation and comments that so many of us received over the, the break and onward we go. So let me ask if there are any disclosures of peculiar interest. Councillor van Meerbruggen. We need audio, please councillor.
Thank you. The second report of the SPPC, uh, four point five C relating to children's services. And indeed, if there's anything else relating to children's services, as my wife owns and operates her own daycare.
Thank you. Any other declarations of peculiar interest? Councillor Holmer.
Thank you. On four point five B, the matters pertaining to the City of London's golf budget, my father is employed by the National Golf Course Owners Association, so I'll declare peculiar interest there.
So noted. Thank you very much. Any other declarations? Seeing none, colleagues, what I would like to then do is, um, turn to the recognitions component, and I have a very unique privilege once a year on behalf of our members of council. And that is to formally announce the 2021 honorees of the Mayor's Honors List. I'm going to read them first in order, and then I'm going to provide some background on the individuals if I can. But as background, if I can tell you first, the, the Mayor's Annual Honors List began actually in nineteen seventy-six with recognition of contribution to the arts. But since then, in fact, since nineteen eighty-nine, additional categories have been added to provide tribute to the diversity of philanthropic work taking place in the Forest City. And then beyond that, last year was the first year that City Council, as opposed to simply and only advisory committees, were able to make some nominations themselves, and that is in the distinguished Londoner group. So with all of that as background, firstly, let me list the individuals who are the honorees for, for this year. The first is Gerry Lahey, posthumously in the area of accessibility. Jean Knight in the category age-friendly. Betty Ann Yonker in the category of arts. Mitch Barron posthumally as a distinguished Londoner. Wayne Dunn as a distinguished Londoner. Jim Campbell as a distinguished Londoner. Joey Hollingsworth as a distinguished Londoner. Mary Alakakos in the category diversity. Mary Anne Griffith in environment. Sylvia Chodas in heritage. Abe Utschorn in the area of housing. Gerry McCall in the area of humanitarianism and Murray Howard in the category of sports. So I'm going to just give a brief background. Now colleagues, what's different is you'll remember that when we provided these awards, certainly in this council term, we had those recipients with a little reception, um, on the twelfth floor, and then they came down to the horseshoe and they came up and received a certificate. We'll ensure they receive their certificates, but right now, as we would typically do, provide a brief background on these individuals, because I think it's important that Londoners know, the individuals who we celebrate for the incredible philanthropic and community support work that they have done throughout this past year. Let me start, if I can, in the category of accessibility, Gerry Lahey. A double amputee, Gerry lost both of his legs from the knee down from complications with diabetes. As a result, Gerry's life was altered by the necessary use of a wheelchair and prosthetic legs. Gerry also at times struggled with addictions in alcohol and mental health issues, including a suicide attempt. But Gerry was a fighter, and he turned these tremendous challenges towards being an advocate for a better, more inclusive London. He was public about those struggles, whether through his blog and social media, his self-published books, as well as those individual personal interactions he had with fellow Londoners. Gerry served on the Accessibility Advisory Committee, as well as the Community Diversity and Inclusion Strategy Working Group. Gerry was pragmatic, but an outspoken advocate for accessibility issues in London. Gerry was an advocate for a more inclusive and accessible London, for the BIPOC residents and for women and girls, recognizing that barriers to participation and success for people are not limited to physical or mental wellbeing, but can also be systemic. He represented the, represented the best of citizen engagement. It was easy to see the impact of Gerry's efforts and the outpouring of sadness and grief at his passing. As a diverse and large group of Londoners from across the political spectrum and socioeconomic spectrum, our community lamented his loss and praised his work. So for his lifelong commitment to making his community more accessible for all, Gerry Lahey has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of accessibility. In the category of age-friendly, Jean Knight. Jean's passion for service for all people, especially older adults, has led her to a lifetime collaborative approach, pardon me, has led her to a lifetime passion as a volunteer and in helping others. Her consistent, thoughtful, and collaborative approach has helped lay the foundation for the age-friendly programs and services for which London has been known. Jean has been a quick responder to efforts related to the COVID-19 pandemic. She stepped up as a volunteer with the Centre for Mental Health and Addictions as a crisis line volunteer, as well as a friendly caller. After retiring from a successful thirty-year career in the field of rehabilitation and social service programs, Jean was hired by the Seniors Community Association. And in this role, from two, from two thousand eight to twelve, Jean worked in a number of neighborhoods in London at the grassroots level to reach out to seniors and to connect with community gathering spots, be it places of worship, libraries, and community centers. Projects range from helping a group do advocacy work, to making changes around traffic lights, to social groups that met on a regular basis. In two thousand eight, Jean also became a member of the City of London's Age Friendly Cities Working Group, whose mandate was to establish London as a more age-friendly What I find compelling is that on the basis of that age-friendly community report, it recommended the City Council give consideration to identifying a means of ensuring that the voices of seniors continue to be heard. This led to the establishment of the Age Friendly Task Force in two thousand eleven, and Jean gets so much credit. In her direct involvement with Age Friendly London, which spanned more than a decade, spans more than a decade, she has contributed to making London an age-friendly place through a number of other volunteer roles. The Council for London Seniors, the City of London's Accessibility Advisory Committee, and she served on the Board of Hutton House and on the Board of Addiction Services of Thames Valley. So all of the work she's done, though, through these many community organizations, is helping to make and significantly point out that London is truly an age-friendly community. So for her passion and commitment to the enhancement improvement in the lives of older adults, Jean Knight has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of age-friendly. Now in the category of the arts, Betty Ann Yonker. Betty Ann returned to Western as dean and professor of music education of the non-rite music faculty in August two thousand eleven. At Western, she received the Dr. Pedro Goldman Award Faculty of Music Students Council Award. Returning to London over ten years ago, Dr. Yonker immersed herself in the local arts community through her work at Western and joining the London Arts Council Board of Directors. With the Arts Council, Dr. Yonker advocated for the equitable treatment of artists, helped to steward the London Arts Council through a major transition of the Community Arts Investment Program, and helped create new opportunities for professional arts in our city. She continues to contribute to the London arts community through advocacy and dedication to music education. Through her profession, she is working in collaboration with many of London arts organizations, including the Ewan Performing Arts Center, the Grand Theatre, and London Symphony, all in an effort to create and solidify campus-to-community relations. She is one amazing person, and for dedicating her whole life to providing us with rich artistic fare and enhancing the reputation of our city as a center of high-level artistic endeavors, Betty Ann Yonker has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of arts. In the category of sports, Murray Howard. For the past forty-five years, forty-five years, Murray Howard has been a big part of the George Bray Sports Association. In the first few years, he coached a team, and for the past forty-three, has been president and director of hockey operations. George Bray Sports Association provides a hockey league that encourages special-needs children, young adults and adults, to play and be part of a hockey team and league. Murray doesn't have special-needs children, but you know what he does have? He has a passion, a desire, and a love for these children and youth, and has worked tirelessly for forty-five years to make sure that all these children have an opportunity to be included in the sport. Players are taught the rules as they play and are expected to learn and play by them. They learn what teamwork is, the joy of winning, actually the joy of losing, and how to lose properly. They learn life skills, as well as hockey skills, and are accepted by their teammates and coaches, something that often doesn't happen in their everyday life. All of these opportunities are a result of Murray's dedication to the George Bray program. His leadership passion and ability to organize the players, volunteers, hockey equipment and team shows the love and desire that he's provided over the many years. Murray believes in the magic puck, because when the puck drops, the life skills, the magic begins. For his efforts and continued commitment to athletes in London, Murray Howard has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of sports. In the category of housing, Dr. Abe Utschorn. Abe is an assistant professor in the Arthur Lebat School of Nursing at Western University. Having worked as a nurse with people experiencing homelessness, Abe's research focuses on health equity through housing stability. He has passed chair of the London Homeless Coalition, a Canada One Fifty Medal recipient, and is managing editor of the International Journal on Homelessness. He has cross appointments with Lawson Health Research and the Department of Psychiatry at Western, as well as serving as a member of the Centre for Research on Health Equity and Social Inclusion. His teaching interests involve community health, mental health, global health, research methods, and advanced nursing theory. In August of this past year, he became the managing editor of the International Journal on, on homeless, and co-led the founding of that journal. He was awarded the Western Humanitarian Award for his work on any homelessness. For his commitment to ensuring Londoners have access to affordable and dignified housing, Dr. Abe Utschorn has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of housing. In the category of the environment, Mary Anne Griffith. Mary Anne is a committed environmentalist and an advocate for local sustainable food systems and renewable energy. She worked with London-based organizations to promote sustainability and community-driven carbon and waste reduction, including Growing Chefs, The Root Cellar, and Building Better. She's worked on social justice and sustainable development projects in indigenous communities in many countries, and works closely with First Nations communities in Ontario to increase access to clean water, clean energy resources, and sustainable, affordable housing. She's a certified energy auditor, a member of the Association of Energy Engineers, a lead green associate with extensive building science training, including Energy Star and CHBA Net Zero Builder. She is currently the Green Economy London Hub Manager at the London Environmental Network. An incredible resume. Mary Anne worked with the Chippewa, the Thames First Nations staff to build a composter for their community garden, and offered fruit trees and home composters to local residents. She's well-known in her Old East Village community as an environmentalist, so much so that she was recently asked to develop green, a green Christmas gift recommendations for the OEV's social media pages. For her passion in teaching Londoners to appreciate their natural environment while protecting it for future generations, Mary Anne Griffith has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of environment. In the category of heritage, Sylvia Chodas. Sylvia is an active volunteer and advocate in London's heritage community for many years. She's a longtime member and volunteer with Architectural Conservancy Ontario, London Region, and served as board member with the organization for many years. She's also a member of Heritage London Foundation and the London and Middlesex Historical Society. She has coordinated the annual Geranium Heritage House tour for so many years. Another event in which she plays a key role is the annual ACO London and Middlesex Historical Society Joint Bus Tour, which takes guests on a day-long guided tour of historical towns and sites across southwestern Ontario. Like the Geranium tour, these tours require intense advance planning and research, and Sylvia's been a volunteer tour guide for these walking tours during doors open each September, and has led downtown heritage tours from Museum London during their summer session. She also leads the tour of historic city-owned Grosvenor Lodge and Elsie Perrin Williams Estate properties. She's a regular volunteer at Community Heritage Events She's a regular volunteer at community heritage events such as the annual Heritage Fair and made presentations on London's area of heritage to a number of community organizations. She's spoken and written letters in support of heritage conservation advocacy, both as an ACO board member and as an individual citizen. So for her dedication to ensuring local history and heritage is better understood and more greatly appreciated, Sylvia Chodas has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of heritage. In the category of distinguished Londoner, Mitchell Barron. Mitch was a highly successful entrepreneur, businessman, and philanthropist, who was passionate about the importance of the role of innovation in both the economy and our quality of life. As the owner and chair of the Trudal Medical Group, his vision and hard work resulted in Trudal becoming a global player in the manufacturing and distribution of medical products. The Barron family continues to operate Trudal following the example set by their dad. Throughout his lifetime, Mitch was the recipient of so many awards and honors, including the London Business Hall of Fame, the London Chamber of Commerce Business Achievement Award, and the Queen Elizabeth II Diamond Jubilee Medal. Along with his wife and children, Dr. Barron set up the Mitchell and Catherine Barron Family Foundation, supporting local healthcare and human services. He will always be remembered for his kindness and dedication to helping those less fortunate and for being a champion for the City of London. For his commitment to London, business excellence, and philanthropy, Mitchell A. Barron has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of distinguished Londoner. In another category of distinguished Londoner, Wayne Dunn. Wayne's contribution to community in London is unparalleled. The primary focus of his community work centers around helping young people and children. As an entrepreneur and partner in county heritage force products, Wayne has used his considerable influence to engage other businesspeople to work with him on a number of community projects such as adopting several struggling families during the winter holiday season and providing parents and kids with food and toys. His company also sponsored a number of local sports teams involving youth. One of his major achievements was his role as co-chair of the Sunshine Dreams for Kids charity golf classic, which created an endowment of more than $1.5 million to provide dreams for children with severe disabilities and life-threatening illnesses. He also helped reestablish and for 20 years has continued to co-chair and chair the Business Care's Food Drive, which supports the needs of clients of the London Area Food Bank and many agencies throughout the city. Wayne's schedule is constantly full of non-business activities in support of our community. For many years, he has been active in the London Chamber of Commerce, serving also as its president, involved in a number of events, and active in all of the committees associated with the chamber. As a result of his daughter Allison passing away to a brain tumor earlier this year, Wayne organized a community run, Done With Cancer, raising more than $200,000 for the Brain Tumor Foundation based in London. London has benefited so strongly from his strong leadership, and he's touched hearts, and all of us who know him touched thoroughly by his incredible involvement in our London community. For his abiding love and enthusiasm for London and spearheading local charity initiatives, Wayne Dunn has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of distinguished Londoner. In the category of distinguished Londoner, Jim Campbell. Jim's a longtime member of the Byron Optimists and has shown great leadership skills in many areas, from coaching hockey and soccer to his volunteer work with the Byron Springbank Legion Poppy Fund Campaign. As president of the Legion, he's also been active in increasing the profile of participation in London, of the Legion in London. He is also a member of the city's Community Safety and Crime Prevention Advisory Group. He's always gone beyond the cause, investing his time and energy to support our community. So for his commitment to building London in community, Jim Campbell has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of distinguished Londoner. Joey Hollingsworth. Joey is a black Canadian tap dancer, singer, and conga player who's performed on stage and screen throughout the world. He appeared regularly on Canadian television shows from the 1950s through the 1970s and received a Lifetime Achievement Award from the Ontario Black History Society in 2018. Joey, born in London, Ontario, broke racial barriers through his televised performances and the society, he said in a news release, that Hollingsworth was one of the earliest black performers on CBC Television. For his trailblazing efforts and ability to inspire, Joey Hollingsworth has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of distinguished Londoner. In the category of diversity, Mary Alakakis. Mary is a strong advocate of diversity and inclusion in our community, and it is a large aspect of her work. It's what she does. She uses her voice to speak from the perspectives of her Ojibwe ancestors. She was a CDIS Steering Committee member and helped develop the strategies to take concrete steps towards healing and reconciliation in 2017. Mary is a staff support for the working group implementing these strategies. Mary sits on the Board of Directors at Pillar Network as vice chair. She ensures that equity and inclusion are included at every level of conversation, from strategic planning to recruitment practices. She is also part of the Indigenous Advisory Committee and takes part in the design and delivery to the Pillar Board. Mary, fun fact, taught basic karate skills to school-aged children at Antler River Elementary School at Chippewa's of the Thames First Nation through a volunteer program called Hero's Circle. She's a member of the Indigenous Leadership Circle, a local community of indigenous cross-sectional professionals, where she supports fellow professionals, indigenous colleagues, who work in isolation and are often leading the equity and inclusion conversation from an indigenous perspective. In her current role, she provides advice across many divisions and helps to navigate conversation with indigenous and versionation communities downstream from London, Ontario. For her commitment to education, promoting dialogue, and building a more inclusive London, Mary Alakakis has been named to the Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of diversity. In the category of humanitarianism, Jeremy McCall. Jeremy has volunteer involvement with various social groups and nonprofits. In his free time, he aids in the well for fellow London citizens. He's a member of the Inova Fundraising Committee, a Big Brother, volunteer youth, basketball coach, coordinator of his neighborhood watch, and he's been a member of the Oakridge Optimists. Jeremy has always been a philanthropist. He reaches into his own pocket daily for the simplest acts of kindness, buying a cup of coffee, buying a meal. However, volunteering to raise awareness and needed funds to local causes is at the core of who he is as a community leader. Through coaching, volunteering, and fundraising for nonprofits, Jeremy has learned the importance of leading by example. In 2013, he co-founded Dad Club London as a means to support men in the community who might need support in their own role as men and fathers. He's enshrined what it takes to be a great dad and has supported other men to feel that it is normal and okay to be an integral part of your children's lives. Through ongoing efforts in fundraising, the Dad Club London has raised and donated over $140,000 in and around London in their initiatives across race, gender, religion, political, and socioeconomic divides. For exemplifying the characteristics and traits of a community leader, Jeremy McCall has been named to the new Mayor's New Year's Honors List in the category of humanitarianism. So colleagues, I know that was longer than we would normally spend in recognitions, but if these people were here, it's what we would have said, and while they are not in here physically, we know that they are certainly with us in thought and in spirit for those as we honor their contributions to make our city the greatest city in Canada. So with that, on behalf of all of council, I wonder if we might give them some show They will be getting certificates and no food going forward in the next couple of days, just so that you're aware. I'd like to thank councillors and committees who were responsible for the nominations as we went forward. So colleagues, I'd now like to turn your attention to the review of confidential matters to be considered in public. I'm not aware that there are any. So with that, though, what I would do is I would ask for a motion to move item four in closed session and the second report of council in closed session to after stage 13 bylaws. I'd like to ask for a mover, please. Councillor Palos is seconded by Councillor Ed Mirberg. Any comments? Let's call the question. Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 0. I'm sorry, was there a comment from a colleague?
No, it's fine, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I'll turn your attention out in five minutes from the meeting held on December 8, 2020. We're putting that on the floor with a mover, is there a mover, please? Councillor Lewis, seconded by Councillor Hillier, thank you. Any discussion? Then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues. Under communications and petitions, there are three communications. The first, item 7, 4.1 of the third report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee related to governance, functional review, housing development. The second is item 2, 4.1 of the second report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee relating to the review of budget amendments, and an added item 2, 4.1 of the second report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee related to the review of the budget amendments. And that will come up in the appropriate section of our discussion. So with that, I'd like to look for a motion to refer it to the appropriate section in the agenda, is there a mover, please? Councillor Lehman, seconded by Councillor Hopkins, any comments or questions? Seeing none, let's call the question, please.
Oh, it just came up, and then it... I'll vote yea, it's not coming up for some reason, this vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues. There are no motions which notice is given, so I'll turn your attention to reports under item 8, 8.1, the first report of the Corporate Services Committee. Let me call on Councillor Cassidy to present the first report.
Thank you, Your Worship. I will put the entire report on the floor. It wasn't a long meeting, it's not a long report. I have not heard if anyone would like anything pulled.
Does anyone wish to have anything dealt with separately? Seeing none, back to you, Councillor Cassidy.
Okay, the whole report is on the floor.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Thanks very much, Councillor Cassidy. You got off late, the first report of this session. Thank you very much. 8.2, the first report of the Planning and Environment Committee, I'll call on Councillor Squire, please, to present.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have not heard from anyone who wishes to have anything pulled, so I'll put the entire report on the floor.
Does anyone wish to have anything dealt with separately? Seeing none, any comments or questions with respect to 8.2 Planning and Environment?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our staff, particularly Mr. De Custer, but I know he was only leading. I know other staff were involved in this on the Argyle Regeneration Study and ultimately the recommendation that's coming here for ratification tonight on the approval of a community improvement plan for the Argyle area. This is something that's been met with a great deal of enthusiasm by our Argyle Business Improvement Association and the Argyle Community Association, and we really just want to thank staff, both on behalf of myself and those organizations, for the work they've put into this already, and we look forward to continuing to work with them as this community improvement plan rolls out to start to regenerate the East End of London.
Thank you, Councillor Lewis. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Hopkins?
Yes, I just would like to thank the Planning Committee for allowing me to stand as vice chair of the Planning Committee for this year. So thank you.
Pleasure. Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to give a brief comment on item 3.3 from the committee report, which is the Applewood subdivision. It's been before this council a number of times and the previous council as well. I know in previous council, there had been a concern when some of the medium-density blocks had been reduced down to single-detached homes and low-density, and I believe it was Councillor Helmer that had expressed some concern about that reduction in density, and so he will be happy to see that some of that density has been upped again, so gone from single-detached up to medium-density. So it's a good thing to see this project moving forward. If anyone's driving around the Adelaide and Sunningdale area, they will see a lot of construction going on around there, and so it's a very exciting development, mixed-use, commercial, office, retail, along with a bunch of different forms of housing. So very excited to see it move forward. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other comments or questions?
Seeing none, it's moved and on the floor.
With that, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you, Councillor Squire. Now on 8.3, the second report of the Community and Protective Services Committee, I'll call on Councillor Helmer to present the report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll put the whole report on the floor. The committee dealt with a number of important recommendations related to housing. You'll see the details, of course, for all those things in the reports that came into the committee, but I will say that in terms of resting spaces and providing support for people who are living unsheltered, the modular housing, which was obviously announced, I think on the same day of the funding for that, a lot of things happening on the housing and homelessness prevention front. So I'll put the whole report on the floor. There was also an important update on the East Lions Community Centre, getting progress to happen on that file and using some of the funding that was available from another project that came under budget to cover the interim costs of keeping a consultant on the project so it can keep moving forward.
Thank you. Do any colleagues wish to have any of these items pulled to be dealt with separately versus broad discussion? Seeing none, any comments or questions with respect to the second report of the Community and Protective Services Committee? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Van Holst, closing the vote, the motion carries 14 to 0.
Thank you very much, Councillor Helmer. We have three reports from the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, and I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Morgan to take us through... to take us through all three and, and respond accordingly. So, if I can, we'll start with the first report of the SPPC relating to the budget. In fact, I will tell you that the first two are very specific in that direction. Deputy Mayor Morgan, please.
Thank you, your worship. The, I'll put the whole SPPC report, the first special meeting of the SPPC. This one is related to the public participation meeting related to the budget update, so I don't believe anybody will want anything separately called there. It was just feedback from the public. I'll put the whole thing on the floor.
So, does anyone wish any item under eight point four, the first report of the SPPC meeting, to be dealt with separately? Any comments or questions, then, relating to the first report? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Morgan?
With the second report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, I'll let colleagues know how I'm going to proceed on this. This is the, this is basically the budget. I'm going to proceed with putting a couple of items on the floor, and then I will pull out all of the items where there were conflicts, or all of the items where counselors in advance have asked me to vote on components separately. So, I'm just going to go with it, go over it with you now on how I'll do this, so that you can follow along, and we could certainly have any debates we need to debate. First thing I'm going to do is put items one and two on the floor together, which is basically just the budget presentation and disclosures. Within item three, which is four point one, and this is page two of the report, four point one is all of the budget amendments. There are a couple of conflicts within those budget amendments, and so I will be calling D and E separately, and then Counselor Van Holst has, I think, a motion related to case ten, so I would call J separately, but I would proceed with all the other ones together, unless counselors would like to deal with any of the business cases separately. So, just let me know if you'd like to do that at the end of my comments. Then, going back to the, the report, I'll, I'll put four, five, and six on together, but when we get to seven, there are components of the operating budget that are separated out that colleagues have declared a conflict on, so we'll, we'll deal with those items within four point five all separately. Item four point six, the capital budget, I've been asked to call separately, so I will do that, and then I would proceed with the rest of the components of the report altogether. And I'll do it in that order because it makes sense that if anything was voted down, that we might have to change components of the subsequent motions, and so, so we'll proceed with it in that order. So, unless colleagues would like anything else pulled, and certainly, you know, we can do this as we go along, but it's preferential to, to indicate it at the front so the clerks can prepare the motions, that's how I, I intended to proceed with, with the budget votes.
So, if I understand, Deputy Mayor, you're suggesting that, subject to people wishing to pull these separately, that for consideration now in the consent agenda, we have items one, two, all of three except D, E, and J, and you'll correct me, four?
Actually, your worship, just because we would like to actually pass some of the motions before we get to the parts about reconciling the table budget to the Public Sector Accounting Report, I'll actually do it in sections, so I will just put one and two on the floor first.
So, do them, you'll do them in chunks?
We'll vote on those, then we'll put four point one on the floor, and there will be components of that that will be voted on separately.
Fair enough. I'll let you control that. So, that with that, Deputy Mayor's got items one and two on the floor, and this, well, one is disclosure, and then the separate is budget overview. Any comments or questions with respect to those items one and two? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Squire? He's going to pull back conflicts. Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes, so I will put four point one on the floor, and I'm looking to vote on cases four, which is children's services. I, I was going to do case five, the health unit, but I don't believe Counselor Turner is on at the meeting. Okay, so we don't have to do that separate. So, just case four, separate, and case ten, separate. And I guess I would look to colleagues to see, would you like anything else in this block of budget amendments voted on separately? Counselor Hopkins has one.
Counselor?
Yes, it's, are you pulling case number nine? I would like that pulled, since I voted no on that one. Is that in their block? Trying to keep up here.
Nope, we'll pull that one separately.
Thank you.
Any other items, colleagues, you wish to have dealt with separately? So then, what that means then, Deputy Mayor, is that we will be dealing with all items in the second report with the exception of four, nine, and ten. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, any comments or questions with respect to those items with the exception of four, nine, and ten? Seeing none, we'll call the question on those items.
Counselor Cassidy?
It's still loading, so I'll vote yes.
Close the vote and the motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor Morgan?
I'll put case number four, which is related to children's services, on the floor, and I'm doing that separate because it was related to some declared interests.
Any comments or questions with respect to item four? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries twelve to one with one recused.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Morgan?
Yes, case number nine, I'll put on the floor next at Counselor Hopkins' request. This is the one related to the London film sector.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Counselor Hopkins?
Yes, your worship, and I'd just like to make a, a comment, why I did not support this at committee, and I was supportive of the staff recommendation coming forward. I do think it is important to support our film sector, but I saw, I feel it is just as important to be fiscally responsible and wasn't supportive of the increase, so that is my reasoning for not supporting this going forward.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Kaia Vaga? Thank you. Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen to one.
Deputy Mayor Morgan, please.
Okay, case number ten, which is the sixty percent waste diversion action plan, I will put that on the floor.
Comments or questions? Counselor Van Holst?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I did have a, a comment about this one. The, we know that the mixed waste is going to be the future for London eventually, and because it provides a better diversion, I realize that perhaps we should look to speed up that, that future, since that's what's being done in some other municipalities. So, I sent a link off to my colleagues earlier today to the, our FEI that the Region Appeal has put together, and they're asking for proponents to look at a, a mixed-waste treatment plant for their multi-residential facilities of up to a hundred metric tons per year, which is about what we're looking for. And, and I think, at, at this point, we're, we've set our, our sights just on a green bin, but I've got a simple motion I'd like to, to put forward, just to widen the aperture and, or broaden our horizons a little bit, so that those, those opportunities are available to us as well. There's been a bit of a delay in implementing the, the mixed-waste or the sixty percent diversion action plan, and because of that, I think we've seen a little more maturity in the market. That, that our FEI from the Region Appeal attracted thirty-three plan takers, so there's, there's certainly opportunities out there, and we should look at them for, for a number of reasons. And I draw my colleagues' attention to page thirty-two of the, of the agenda, and it's, I've put together a little five-page report, it could have been fifty pages, but I think this was enough, just to show you some of the, the possibilities I see for us. The first is to some savings by leapfrogging the, the green bin. We could save fifteen million dollars simply by jumping to the next new technology, if that turns out to be possible. The other great opportunity is that the, those technologies largely coming from Europe are hoping to get a foot in the door in North America, and for that reason, they're willing to make some concessions, and I expect those are going to be even greater, since we're expecting a little more green priorities down south of the border. So, establishing themselves in, in a place like London where we're ready to move forward will be very attractive. The, and because of that, I, I guess the next reason was this quite a bit of savings that I see potentially, and we're in a position now, clearly in this budget, where we need to find savings for our, our residents, and so long-term savings are, are, are substantial here for us. I, I point out that, that the, going with the mixed-waste gives us about double the diverted organics that we would get otherwise, because it doesn't require residents to participate. Every garbage bag goes through the process. It, it doesn't require them to be disciplined or good at separating, because it's all collected, and all of our multi-residentials, garbage could go right to it. We wouldn't have to do a separate pilot project for that. That's an advantage. One of the other things is that we wouldn't be sending an extra set of trucks around every other week, so we're getting some gains, further gains with greenhouse reduction. The, the nice thing about it is that with mixed-waste, we would actually meet our targets, which is not the case with the sixty percent diversion plan that we've got right now. It's, it's, it's very easy for residences. It, operationally, it requires nothing different that, for us, at the, at the, at the doors.
So, I'm, you're at five minutes now, Counselor, and I was, and I, no, there's, no, I'm going to stop it right there for just a moment. You put a motion on the floor, but I'm not sure that there's a second for this. I'm looking to see if there is, please. Counselor Van Mirberg, and thank you very much. Any other comments or questions, then, please. And, and sorry, Counselor Van Holst, I don't mean to be rude, but we are all responsible for our timelines, and I just want to be centered with that. I have Counselor Squire, and I'm taking a list here. Thank you very much. Counselor Squire?
Couple of comments, now that this matter is, is on the floor. I, I suppose my, my first question would be, what does the motion mean? It's, it's not clear to me what it means. I, I could see us going out through our public participation process that we do in, in waste diversion and say, here's something that's out there, we're going to explore it, and let the public know what we're doing in that particular area. But the second part, which is to include it in the procurement process, is a little more difficult for me, because it seems to imply that we've already reached the point where we've agreed with the technology and we're going to procure it. In other words, we're directing staff to put it actually in the process, along with other things, that we're going to, we're going to actually do. So, I'm not, I, I, I find it very difficult at all times to do that, sort of, just from a presentation that I, I'm hearing at council. So, those are my comments, but I also have a question, which is, I'd like to hear from staff, Ms. Sheriff, she is here, about this technology, what stage it is in terms of development, and where it is in terms of actionability from the City of London. Because although it may be something we're considering, the only thing, which is very true, that we have approved, is the Green Bin program, and I think we can't go off that and now say, well, we're going to take part of the Green Bin money and part of that program and reallocate it somewhere else. So, I, I'm looking for clarification, but I certainly can't support a motion that talks about procurement before we've even reached the stage of approving the, the actual project.
Ms. Sheriff?
Thank you, your worship. Mixed-waste technology is certainly what's next.
Sorry, I apologize, Counselor, I, I apologize, Ms. Sheriff. Counselor Van Holst, you've had your five minutes, and I see that you have put a, a backgrounder there, without you there. I think it would be, I think it's disrespectful when we are trying to, without, without additional advocacy based on background materials there. You've presented a, you've presented a, a case, but I'll ask you to take the backgrounds off, if you would please. Ms. Sheriff, please.
Thank you, your worship. Certainly, staff agree that mixed-waste technology offers a number of benefits. We actually did go to the market for an expression of interest back in 2016. We received a number of, of interested parties who at that time wanted to be part of a future process. We're very intimately connected to the Process Appeal region as well, in fact, to the point where we're helping with some of the procurement language. Our Green Bin program is designed specifically to be a bridge between this and what's next, which is why we're not investing in a processing facility. We are procuring short-lived assets, vehicles, containers, and a contracted service to manage that waste, knowing that to bring something like mixed-waste online will take many years. Our optimistic estimate for permitting a fair and transparent procurement process in concurrence with the CETA rules, consultation, including with indigenous neighbors, tender construction, servicing, planning approvals, building permits, is about five years, and we don't have a do-nothing option in those five years. So, the answer is actually both. We would like to, Green Bin needs to proceed as planned. We cannot muddy the procurement waters or the engagement waters by trying to introduce a technology we will not bring, be bringing to Londoners at this time. The North American state of practice has changed very little in the last few years, in fact, with respect to mixed-waste. However, we do also want to come back and have a conversation about starting down the path for mixed-waste in the future, knowing that the lead times are quite long, knowing that the technology is immature in North America, but there are a number of European players who are interested in being here. So, we would propose to proceed as per the budget, budget business case. So we would propose to proceed as per the budget, budget business case, and report back this quarter. We have an unsolicited proposal related to this technology outlining the next steps and the longer-term transition to mixed-waste technology, likely in the five to seven-year range.
Counselor Squire.
So that, that information seems to indicate to me that the first part is, we're, is, is being dealt with from the point of view of, we're, we're looking at this. I can't believe, and I'm, I'm now sort of satisfied that, I can't believe our staff wouldn't be looking at this, and of course, they are. But the second part is the procurement part, and I, I can't support that. I can't support going to, anything to do with procurement, that's a hard word to say sometimes, when, when we haven't gotten through the research stage. And, and so I, I'm not sure a motion is necessary for my purposes at this point in time, but I'll, I'll listen to the discussion.
Thank you. I have now Counselor Helmer, please.
Thank you. The matter that's in front of us is the business case that we approved as part of the multi-year budget, which includes the Green Bin program. And the changes we're making right here with this amendment is to delay the previously approved approach. So, you know, that's what I would like to consider, and not some other idea that we haven't approved. This is really a budget discussion about when are we going to spend this money and on what, and certainly not a decision around procurement. So I think if the council wants to bring a motion to committee about pursuing mixed-waste processing or something like that, I, I think that discussion could happen there, but not in the budget discussion around something that's already been approved, and we're really just talking about delaying it, which has some benefits to the property taxpayers in the short term, because we're putting off the expenditure for a while. But, you know, to have the whole discussion about what we're doing around technology is, I don't think is appropriate for a discussion about the budget update.
Thank you. Counselor Hopkins.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. And I would also like to suggest that we, we know, and I want to thank the Counselor, because waste diversion is an important part of what we're going to be doing here in the City of London. We're, we're going to be doing the, the green bins, and we're looking, as I understand it, at already waste diversion, as we look at waste in our apartment buildings. And I know that other communities in the province is, are also looking at waste diversion and, and how we deal with that is something that I understand is already a conversation with staff. I would encourage the Counselor, just for my information as well, the council get a report, waste diversion and what's going on is going to be, is an important conversation in our community, and getting a report back from staff where we are. I heard from Ms. Sheer that it will be in the first quarter, which is great, but more information coming to, to us is going to be important as we move forward. So those are my comments, and I'll just turn it back to you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Van Mirberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to thank Counselor Van, Van Holst for bringing this forward. He's obviously done a fair amount of research here, and, and has brought up a very important topic. I mean, the fact of the matter is, if we can get to the mixed-waste diversion and leapfrog over what is rapidly becoming yesterday's technology, that being the Green Bin, then so much the better for, for our taxpayers and for our city. Clearly, this, the, the Green Bin is an intermediary step. It's going to cost a lot of money. If we, if there's some way that we can get to what is obviously the end goal, which is mixed-waste diversion, then I, I think that's very positive. We can see that other municipalities in Ontario are taking that step. We should also be in that, in that group. We've bought ourselves a lot of time. We've saved ourselves a lot of money with the fact that we've taken this slower approach as to how, how we deal with diversion and diversion rates and diversion technology. This is something that's more efficient, get way more bang for the buck. So we should keep our eye on this. And again, I thank Counselor Van Holst for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Before I let you do a rap on this, Counselor Van Holst, I'll see if there's any other comments or questions. Counselor Van Holst.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thanks to my colleagues for their, their comments as well. My concern, of course, that is that staff might sweep off the table some important opportunities, because we had directed them to move.
Sorry, I want to, I want to caution. I'm, I'm being very mindful and respectful of words, and, and when we say sweep off the table, I, I, I'm, I'm sure you didn't mean it quite that way, so you, I might ask you just to reconsider your comments and your choice of words.
Well, I'm sorry. And, and again, my concern was that setting our budget and then moving forward, we wouldn't have the opportunity to consider any, any new opportunities that, that are coming up, because it would now require reconsideration. And so that's why I wanted to get this in, in as the budget. And also because I was kind of surprised at, at the, the amount of, the amount of money that, that we need to take, well, the, the increases. I, I was concerned about those. And so, and I think I'd also like to just mention one thing, and let me put up a, a final graphic, that why mixed waste is, is, is important to, to me? And that's because there's, there's an, you know, an, an unhidden cost to, to the Green Bin program, and that's we're asking our own residents to do the work of separating it. And that if it's such just ten, if it's ten minutes a week over the year, that works out to eight point seven hours, which minimum wage is a hundred and twenty-one dollars a year, times our hundred and fifty thousand homes, and that works out to eighteen million dollars worth of, with the work, which really almost doubles the cost of diversion, if you consider it. So for that reason, I'm irked by, by, by the, by the Green Bin program, when it looks like mixed waste is so close. So that's the reason I bring that forward.
Counselor Hopkins, I'd like to raise, rise on a, a point of personal privilege.
Counselor Hopkins.
I understand, and I try to do my best, that we are at council, and I understand we're only allowed five minutes when we speak at council. And we're only allowed one time. So I would like to make that comment, and I am concerned about some of these comments coming from my colleague that may not, that we may not really understand exactly what he means. And I don't want this conversation to keep on going. I understand we're five minutes, and to you, Your Worship, you are chairing. If you can explain to me the rules.
Thank, thank Counselor Hopkins. I just checked with the clerk on this. And the reason I recognize Counselor Van Holst, who made the motion, is that according to the rules, which sometimes have been a little less consistent, but we try to be a little clearer about that, he was allowed a rap, which would be five minutes and maximum, and he was at two minutes at that point. So that's, that was the rationale, Counselor Hopkins. And I've just checked with the clerk on that. Clerk, do you want to make a comment?
To you, Mr. Mayor, the counselor is correct. It's, it's once at council, but we've been flexible in the past, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure that was helpful, but I, I think I know where you're going with that, clerk.
Technically, it's once.
Technically, we're allowed, so that's, that's once. So there we have it. Any other comments or questions? And are, are you comfortable with that, Counselor Hopkins?
Yes, only once for five minutes. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
So I'm, I make a point of order, then, Your Worship.
I, I, you had the floor. I'm not sure what the point of order is.
Okay, all right. So, so I'll, I'll just continue then for probably not very long. Those are my, those are my points. I can see that there may be some, some path forward to, to discuss mixed waste in the future. And I also respect the comments about this being budget. I think I've expressed.
Point of order, Your Worship.
Yes, go ahead.
I was going to withdraw my motion, so maybe we can, that will.
Okay.
That will get us.
I'm going to stop. There was a point of order though, please.
Okay.
I just was waiting. If the counselor's withdrawing his motion, that's fine, but I didn't know if you had made a ruling. The clerk had indicated that we are allowed to speak once at council for five minutes in total, and I wasn't sure if you had ruled on Counselor Hopkins' original point of order. But I'm repeating her point of order.
I, I thought I had. I thought Counselor Hopkins was satisfied, but I'll go to the clerk. So bear with me, because we've also had, just to make this more interesting, we've had Counselor Van Holst suggest he's withdrawing his motion, but we'll go to the clerk just for absolute clarity. Thank you, Counselor. Clerk, if you would, please.
Your Worship, I just wish to clarify. In accordance with the council procedure bylaw, the, the individual put the motion on the floor can provide a reply, but the intent of the reply is to respond to clarify anything that came up in the discussion. It's not to re-debate what has already been said. So they are allowed to speak at the end. We call it a rap, but it's reply to clarify in response to any comments that were made.
So Counselor Cassidy, I hope that satisfies your question about that, whether you're satisfied, whether the response from the counselor who proposed the motion was sufficient in terms of reply. I was comfortable with that, but now we understand that he is looking to withdraw his motion. Is that correct, Counselor Van Holst?
In, in this point of order, I, I would also clarify that I do have an opportunity to speak to my raised motion and to the, the item on the floor. Is that correct?
Well, kind of mostly a little bit. What it means, Counselor Van Holst, is that you're able to reply to issues that come up as a result of queries relating to comments made by fellow counselors. It is not to bring up new issues necessarily, or to repeat what you have done, save and accept to respond, as the clerks indicated, to queries and comments made by fellow counselors. Clerk? All right, so I've gotten the clerk's interpretation of that as well. I think we're consistent with that. So you're withdrawing your motion. If you are, I, I need your second or to agree to withdraw the motion as, to support the withdrawal of the motion. Counselor Van Mirberg?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So now I'll turn it back now to Deputy Mayor Morgan, please.
Yes, so I, I still have case number ten on the floor, and I think that's where we are. Still happy to leave that as moved, and I'll look to you for any further comments colleagues would have.
Further comments, independent of the motion, that would be appropriate at this time. Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Salie and Counselor Lehman. Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Colleagues, thank you. Now for the third report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, Deputy Mayor.
Yes, no, I'm, I'm not even close to done, the second report. I wish I was done, but.
I was so anxious.
All right. So we've completed a, a part three of the, the second report of the SPPC agenda, of which we separated out four point one. I'm now going to move parts four, five, and six, which in the actual report is four point two, four point three, and four point four together, and then I'll deal with the next components after we, we pass that. So I'll move those three components together, four, five, and six in the agenda.
Thanks very much. So we all know where we are here, and I apologize for getting a little ahead of ourselves. Comments or questions with respect to any of these three items?
Your Worship, just a, really quick, just a clarification what those points are. I'm just trying to catch up on the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The, the four point two reserves and, we are in the second report of SPPC, four point two reserves and reserve funds overview, four point three debt overview, and four point four reconciliation of the tabled budget to Public Sector Accounting Board budget. And why that's appropriate, Counselor Turner, is I'm sure those who are watching are saying, where, where are we in this process? I think that's a helpful comment.
Thank you, Worship. I appreciate that.
Then comments or questions relating to any of those three items? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Counselor Van Holst?
I vote yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fifteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes, colleagues, now I'm going to move to four point five in the committee report, which is the, the main components of the operating budget, due to the conflicts declared by different counselors, as well as the request to deal with certain items separately that were sent to me in, in advance. Every component of four point five will be dealt with separately. There's A, B, C, D, and E. So I will put four point five A on the floor, which is the component of the operating budget related to the Middlesex London Health Unit.
Comments or questions? Counselor Turner.
Your Worship, since I wasn't at the beginning of the meeting, I wasn't able to enter my conflict on this item. I will declare a peculiar interest as a member employee of the Middlesex London Health Unit.
So noted, thank you. Comments or questions? We'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one more Q's.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Yes, and for colleagues and, and folks following along, I'm actually on page eight of the second report of the SPPC, if you want to, to refer to there. We're on four point five B, which is the components of the operating budget related to Gulf, and so I'll put that on the floor.
Comments or questions? Then we'll call the question.
Counselor Squire? Closing the vote and the motion carries thirteen to one with one more Q's.
Deputy Mayor Morgan.
Four point five C, I will put that on the floor. That's the components of the operating budget related to children's services.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen with one more Q's.
Deputy Mayor.
I was asked to call four point five D and E separately. This includes all other areas of the municipal operating budget, and then the, the total budget motion, which is the summary motion at the end. If there are no objections, I think I could do those together, given the, the comments that were made, so I'd put both of those on the floor. So four point five D and E.
Comments or questions? We'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 1.
Deputy mayor.
I was asked to deal with 4.6, which is the capital budget separately, so I'll put the capital budget item on the floor.
Thank you. Comments or questions colleagues? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Helmer? Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 1.
Deputy mayor Morgan.
Yes, all the remaining items in this report were passed to committee unanimously, so I'll put nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 on the floor, and hopefully no one wants anything pulled.
Does anyone wish anything dealt with separately? Any comments or questions with respect to any of the items then? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Salee? Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you. Deputy mayor.
Yes, and now I'll present the third report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, this report has nine items, I will deal with four separately, an item related to mandatory face coverings, there was a conflict declared on that, seven, which is governance functional review of the Housing Development Corporation, and nine, which is the protocol for the London Police Service Business Plan timelines, I'll deal with those three items separately, I'm happy to move the rest of them together unless colleagues would like something else dealt with separately.
Colleagues, tuition, councillor Helmer, dealt with separately?
2.3, number three or 2.3, I have an amendment I'd like to bring forward for that item.
Thank you very much, so noted. Any other items colleagues? Seeing none, that means that we're dealing, oh excuse me, councillor Turner, I apologize, I missed you in there.
Your worship, just wanted to make sure 2.1 was on that list, I think it was, but I went a little quickly there.
Yes, it is, thank you councillor Turner, it is, it's item four, 2.1, yeah. Any other comments with respect to items that you wished to have withdrawn, specifically to that issue? Seeing that then, we would be voting then on all items with the exception of items 2.3, 2.1, 4.1, and 5.1. Comments or questions before the vote on those items, those separated items? Seeing none with the exceptions that we have pulled, we'll call the question.
Councillor Van Holst? Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Deputy mayor Morgan.
Yes, I'll put item three, which is 2.3 in the report, London Community Recovery Network, immediate ideas for action to support London's COVID-19 community recovery, on the floor, and I believe councillor Helmer wanted that dealt with separately.
Comments or questions with respect to item 2.3? Councillor Helmer.
Thank you, colleagues, I circulated some language around amendment to this report coming from committee and the recommendations, essentially what I would like us to do is to extend the deferral of the CIP loan repayments, which we had done till the end of last year, and then also the interest-free loan that was extended to the Palace Theatre to allow them to repair the walls of the building several years ago, we had also deferred repayments on that interest-free loan, but they're both coming due now, and I think given the circumstances that we're in, that a further deferral of those repayments is in order, so what I've suggested is that we defer them until October of 2021, and we'll see where things stand as we get closer to that date, so hopefully there's a secondor who would support that amendment, I think it's relatively straightforward and needed given the circumstances.
I see a number of people looking to second, I have councillor Hillier who I saw first, if so, second by councillor Hillier, comments or questions? Let's vote on it then, please, this is on the amendment.
Councillor Cassidy and councillor Morgan.
Yeah, I have no vote buttons, and it's just refreshed, so I will vote yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Deputy mayor.
Yes, I'm happy to put 2.3 as amended on the floor, I think I need a secondor now that it's been amended though.
Yes, you do, is there a secondor? Councillor Lewis. Comments or questions? Then we'll call the question.
Councillor Van Holst? Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Deputy mayor Morgan.
Yes, I'll put item 2.1, which is the mandatory face coverings bylaw status update on the floor, it contains both the report and some actions related to that report, it's being dealt with separately because of a conflict.
Comments or questions? Councillor Turner.
Your worship, again, as I was not here for the start of the meeting, unable to enter my conflict at that time, I have submitted and provided those conflicts at the earlier meeting, but I declare conflict on this item as I'm an employee of the Middlesex London Health.
Thanks very much, appreciate that. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Lehman?
I vote yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 with one more Q.
Deputy mayor Morgan.
Yes, item 4.1, which is the governance functional review of the Housing Development Corporation, I'm happy to put that one on the floor.
Comments or questions? Then we'll call the question.
Councillor Van Holst? Councillor Van Meerenbergen?
I'll vote yes.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 1.
Deputy mayor.
And to complete my legislative hat-trick, I'll put the final item of the third report on the floor, and that is item 5.1, the protocol for the London Police Service Business Plan timelines.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call the question. Oh, I'm sorry, councillor Cassidy? Apologize.
Hi, thanks, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to mention briefly that this was just a change that we made at the Police Service Board to make their business planning more in line with our strategic planning and our four-year, multi-year budget, so that the timelines match up better, that's all.
Thank you, any other comments? Seeing none, we'll call the question.
Councillor Helmer? Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Well, thanks very much, deputy mayor, we've gotten through the three reports of the Strategic Priorities and Policy. Colleagues, on item 10, I'm not aware of any deferred matters, but I'm aware there may well be an inquiry, so I will turn us to councillor Hopkins, who wishes to raise an inquiry.
Yes, your worship, thank you for acknowledging me, and my inquiry is, as you know, second state of emergency has been declared by the provincial government today, and we know that it is to reduce the spread of COVID, and many businesses in our community have had to temporarily close or amend service delivery, and my inquiry is on behalf of Bowler Mountain Ski Hill, which is in Ward Nine. Bowler Mountain, despite their investment of over $100,000 to put in place measures to meet public health and guidelines, has been required to temporarily close. Bowler Mountain provides employment between 200 and 400 persons, and many Londoners rely on Bowler Mountain to provide access to outdoor activities for both their physical and mental wellness. I'd like to ask the city manager, the civic administration could reach out to representatives of Bowler Mountain to provide guidance with respect to a safe reopening of Bowler Mountain in accordance with the provincial and public health regulations and guidelines when the province permits the reopening to occur.
Ms. Livingston, do you wish to make a comment?
Yes, through your worship, I'd be happy to reach out to the folks at Bowler Mountain, of course, when and how they can open will be entirely set by the province, and I would also be encouraging them to work closely with our local health unit as they consider that reopening, but I'm happy to undertake that outreach as we move forward over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Councillor Hopkins, any other comments?
No, that was my inquiry, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very kindly as well, and thank you to our city manager. I'm not aware of any emergent motions, and we have some items in confidential session before that though. We have bylaws 19 through 32 inclusive, and bill 34, and I'll look for a mover and secondor for introduction and first reading of those bills, is there a mover, councillor Van Meerenbergen, seconded by councillor Lehman, we'll call the vote.
Your worship, I think councillor Van Meerenbergen is trying to get your attention.
I'm sorry, councillor Van Meerenbergen, please. Councillor?
Yeah, thank you, mayor, I just wanted to clarify, is bill 33 being called in this group?
It is not.
Okay, so that'll be called separately?
It will be.
Thank you.
Voting is on your screen, colleagues.
Councillor Van Meerenbergen? Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues, I'm looking for a mover and secondor, secondary of bills 19 through 32, and bill 34, moved by councillor Hillier, seconded by councillor Pelosi. Any comments or discussion? I'm sorry, councillor Hopkins, did you have your hand raised, I just saw some movement, I'm sorry, I missed that then, thank you. Keep those hands together, please. Okay, thank you. I see no other questions, we'll call the question, please.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Thank you, colleagues, I'll look now for a mover and secondor for third reading and enactment of bills 19 through 32, and bill number 34, moved by councillor Pelosi, seconded by councillor Cassidy. We'll call the vote, please.
Councillor Van Holst? Closing the vote and the motion carries 15 to 0.
Colleagues, now I'll turn your attention to bill 33, which is the budget, and... So I'll be looking for a mover and secondor for introduction, first reading of bill 33, is there a mover, please? Councillor Lewis, seconded by councillor Hillier, comments, questions? Then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 1.
So I'll look for a mover and secondor, second reading of bill 33, moved by councillor Pelosi, seconded by councillor Hillier. Well, we had the opportunity for questions in first reading, that wasn't formally appropriate, so let's ask it again, any comments or questions? In the second reading. Then we'll call the question.
Closing the vote and the motion carries 14 to 1.
And colleagues, I'll look for a mover and secondor for third reading and enactment of bill 33, is there a mover, councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Cassidy. Comments or questions? Up, we'll call the vote.
Closing the vote and the motion carries fourteen to one.
Thank you, colleagues. Prior to going into closed session, for the benefit of those who are watching this, I'll ask the clerk to explain, as we do every time, why we are going into closed session, please.
Thank you, your worship. We're going into closed session to discuss two confidential matters. One is related to land acquisition, solicitor-client privilege, advice, position plans, procedures, criteria, or instructions to be applied to any negotiations. And the second item is solicitor-client privilege, advice, position plan, procedure, criteria, or instructions to be applied to any negotiations.
Well, thanks very much. So I'll look for a mover to go into closed session. Counselor Hopkins, seconded by. Now, if we turn on our screens, maybe we can do a hand vote on this. All those in favor of going to closed session? If we don't see you, we can't count your vote.
The motion is carried.
Thanks very much. We just need a couple of moments here to adjust to the closed session, and then we'll come back into public session, having dealt with those items. Thank you.